City of Newburgh Planning Commission meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty is now called to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Sharon Capri.
Here.
Chris Wright. Jeff Musall.
Present.
Jason Dale.
Here.
Linda Newton Curtis.
Yeah.
Sorry, do I have a motion to approve planning commission meeting minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty two?
I'll move to approve the minutes from the November twenty-two planning commission meeting.
I second that.
May I have a voice vote, please? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any of those opposed? Planning Commission meeting minutes for November tenth, twenty twenty-two pass. At this time, allow, we have a quasi judicial public hearing. I call to order the December eighth, twenty twenty-two quasi judicial public hearing for S U B three twenty-two dash zero zero one, located at one hundred South Guard Field Street, subdividing one point nine-three acres into twelve bridge residential home lots. The purpose of the planning commission is to review the application here and discuss public testimony, deliberate facts and findings, and make a motion on the matter and vote. Testifying procedure will be owner or applicant or primary opponents will have fifteen minutes each. Next up will be first proponent and then second, any undecided or opponents. You have a five-minute limit each. After each speaker, planning commissioners may ask questions for clarification. At the end, the owner applicant has a chance for rebuttal. At this time, I would like to call for any abstentions, bias, expertise contact, objections to jurisdiction. Hearing none, may we have the legal announcement for this evening's quasi judicial public hearing?
Thank you, Madam Chair. O R S one ninety-seven, seven ninety-seven requires certain statements be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval or denial of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct their testimony or the evidence towards the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the land use Board of Appeals, L U B A, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is known as the raise it or waive it requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you cannot bring it up at L U B A. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval in enough detail detail to allow the local government or is designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application, the planning commission will grant such requests through a continuance or extension of the record.
Thank you, Doug. May we have a staff reported at this time and planning commissioners may may ask brief questions for clarification?
Hi, Madam Chair, Commissioners. At this time, the applicant's representative would like to address the address the commission. And they are online.
Can you?
Good, good evening. My name is Kelly Grover with Firwood Design Group, applicants representative this evening. Do you need my address or anything like that or? Okay, we we the applicant would like to request for continuance of the hearing due to after receiving the draft staff report, there's some changes that we'd like to potentially review with staff, and so we'd like to continue the hearing.
Okay, so the process then would be, Kelly, what date do you want to continue the hearing to?
We'd like to continue it to the February. I can't remember the ninth, yes, thank you.
So, uh, is the applicant willing to waive the hundred-and-twenty-day rule?
Yes, we will be submitting a letter to that effect.
Very well. The staff would work with the applicant to get the additional time for the sixty-day delay. So with that, for the public here, this would mean that the hearing would be continued to February ninth at seven P M. The commission members, we would need a motion and a second to continue it to February ninth at seven P M at the Public Safety Building. It needs to be date-time specific.
Commissioner Musall, I move that we continue the hearing until February ninth, twenty twenty-two at seven three M in the public, twenty twenty-three, my apologies, in the Public Safety Building.
I mean, you got all these people. Last second, did you move this meeting back? What? Who are you and who gives you the right to do this?
The applicant has the ability to request the continuance and the commission has the authority to continue the hearing.
With no notice.
The notice occurred tonight at the meeting as the applicant.
Right now, right now.
Yes.
That's all legit, you guys.
That is following the law, yes.
Sir. You'll have to refrain from. We are also hearing it this time right along with you. We have also come here this evening prepared for this meeting and. Yes, I know, but I am the commissioner of this hearing, sir. And it will be conducted nicely. And I'm sorry for the disappointment, but as it stands, the they do have a right to ask for that. And if they have other input that will clear up some of the questions we have as commissioners and and even maybe things you have as the public.
Well, did you ask her what it is they don't have that they need to make sure they're not just putting this off to make people not show up the next meeting? And they won't do the same thing again and again and again.
Mister Rux, can you reply to that, please?
As Kelly had indicated, based upon the report that was issued in the conditions that they want to step back and look at what their proposal is, and they may make be making modifications to their proposal based upon the conditions that have been suggested by staff. That's all I know. We're not here to testify this evening.
That is testimony, sir. What you're asking for is defined as testimony.
Well, I really appreciate your comments, sir. At this time, the planning commission, the hearing for quasi judicial order for S U B three twenty-two dash zero zero one at one hundred South Guard Field Street. Hearing is to be continued to February ninth.
Madam Chair, we need a vote on.
Oh, excuse me. May I have a vote on the matter? For the hearing to be continued to February ninth at the Public Safety Building at seven P M for quasi judicial public hearing, S U B three twenty-two dash zero zero one. Do you have a motion?
Sharon?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jeff Musall?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
All right. At this time, the hearing will be continued to February ninth, twenty twenty-three at the Public Safety Building at seven P M for quasi judicial public hearing for S U B three twenty-two dash zero 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 one.
I will answer you, sir. Um, yes.
Now we can answer you.
Yes, they could. Technically, yes, they could request another continuance.
Can you understand, can you emphasize at all, any of you, frustration here?
Yes, uh, one of our. I could say that on a different commission that I'm staffing, that one of our commission member sits on who chairs that one. Uh, we've had on another case, we had three continuances of a hearing.
With no explanation other than they want to redo it first.
They asked for additional time and requested a continuance.
So they can ask our input on this, our, it's affecting us, our street that we live on, we lived there for a long, long time, and we don't want this developed to go in. And whenever they want, right before the meeting, they post a point and just wears down what you're saying.
It has nothing to do with wearing down, they have the ability to request a continuance. You will have the ability to come back on February ninth and provide testimony. There will be a new staff report that will be prepared and available one week prior to that.
I'm not talking about ability. I'm talking about can they do this repeatedly indefinitely?
In my career, I've seen it happen many times, yes.
And sir, quite frankly, if he was to keep, uh, if this party was to keep continuing the meeting, they wouldn't get it built. Would they?
Now, is it the raise it or?
The raise it or waive it? You still have the ability, if you want to submit in written comments, you can do that on February ninth. Before that meeting, you can submit in additional comments, you can come and attend the hearing and testify verbally. Either in the written or your verbal, you have to raise your issues, then they have to address the criteria that are listed in the staff report. Yep. Yes. There is, the hearing is continued, there is no testimony being taken, I'm just explaining to you the process.
And it's just, it's an option of rights and I I do apologize for.
This was your street. If somebody did this to you, yeah, you guys would get a little appeal, I promise. I just said, nice job.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Are we done? Are we done?
Feel free.
What's what's the rest of it?
Just items from staff, uh, things that are scheduled for the next year, potential schedule.
Sir, may I make a suggestion? If you wish to be persuasive to this to this commission, I would suggest you put the attitude away and focus on the criteria before you and contest those criteria specifically, because I'm definitely not persuaded by your attitude this evening.
All I've said is I think it's absurd that we had.
And you're, that has nothing to do, that has nothing to do with your words, sir. Uh, no, that's not quite how this works.
Oh, who pays your wages?
I don't receive any wages for this, this is a volunteer commission. That's correct, that's correct, we received no, no compensation for this.
But you must be some special people.
As I said, do better on your persuasion and you may have better luck, better results.
If we have a meeting next time, I'll try to be a little bit more, if they are polite, we'll be polite right back. This is not directed at you people, it's this B S and you know it is, you know it is.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening. Um, at this time, at this time, planning commissioner will have items from staff.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, you have your forward calendar. So we will be rescheduling the hearing tonight, it's being continued to February ninth. Um, your January meeting, um, just as a reminder, it's time for election of a new chair and a vice chair if your first meeting in January. Uh, you have on your list, we have three conditional uses, they're all quasi judicial, so remember, don't talk to people about it. Um, remember, February sixth, you have an extra meeting in February, so you have a joint meeting between the planning commission and the city council on our multifamily code audit project. And that will be at the planning, uh, city council meeting on the sixth. And then on February ninth, we'll have this continued hearing. And on the schedule, if things all work out, where the, excuse me, the water master plan, middle housing land divisions, and the springbook master plan. Four, four applications for one project on that one. And then in March, we've got a briefing on our housing production strategy on March ninth. Uh, multifamily code audit legislative hearing and then substantial completion of changes to our development code to comply with state law, and that'll be a legislative hearing. Don't have anything scheduled right now for April and May, but you know how that goes, things change. Following up on following up on the chair's question. Last meeting, which is in your minutes, about getting material in advance. Asked if I could think about it, I did, so I'm going to give you a scenario. All right, so I mentioned last month that we have the hundred-and-twenty-day rule. So, once we have an application that is determined complete, we have a hundred and twenty days to go through all of the local review processes and all appeals at the local level. So I did a hypothetical. So if we had an application we determine complete on January second, starting with the new calendar year, and we go out a hundred and twenty days, that would be May second. Once we determine an application complete, then the applicant has to provide us additional copies and we have to go through a two-week, fifteen-day referral process to city departments and agencies. Often it takes them several days, sometimes a week or more to get us the referral copies. So, but to say that they were expedient in it and they quickly got the stuff they needed and then we had it by January seventeenth. So we go out for that two-week, uh, referral. And with that, because of the schedule and the time it takes us to gather all this information up, planning writers portion of a report, get all the information from engineering that goes into the report. If we had an application complete on January second, it would be scheduled for March ninth, planning commission, there's not enough time to get it on the February. We need time to write, it usually takes us three or four weeks to write, polish and finish a report. So, under the chair's request of, if it was seven hundred pages, you know, getting it to two weeks early. Well, that would mean that the packet would have to go out on two twenty-two, that's feasible, all right? But that means it has to go out to everybody, not just the planning, it's open to everybody that has access to the report, you don't get something early. Transparency. If it was a thousand-page report, then that packet would have to go out on two, two fifteen. Or if it was fifteen hundred pages, it would have to go out on two eight, if it was two thousand pages, it would have to go out on one twenty-five. That would mean, under those three, you would not be able to make a March ninth, planning commission meeting, you'd have to kick it to April. And you're timing for your meeting in April, there's not enough time to get in front of the city council if it was appealed by May second. And I didn't get into all the detail, we've got all this legal noticing that we have to do in the paper, we've got a post, the applicant has to send out notice. Tip, it's twenty days in advance that they have to send out the notice to allow comments, we got to get those in. So, I appreciate the inquiry, but it just, time doesn't work.
Yeah, I know it's pretty rare too, to get the twenty-five, but I'm sure that's only happened, I I don't even know how often, rarely, probably in this.
Rarely, but it does happen from time to time.
So Doug, could I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Best-case scenario, how long can you give us, um, to review applications?
The most would be two weeks, but that means I also have to make it available to everybody, two weeks in advance.
And what's the worst-case scenario?
It's kind of the best and the worst.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, worst case is, is, uh, hasn't been too many pages, enough pages to read, but same meeting.
It's always important, you know, is, if you, if you read your staff reports, we've done the analysis and we've given you the recommendations. So you know, when we get these packets, I mean, I've got one sitting on my floor right now, it's going to be a big one. And there's lots of information there, but we've analyzed all of that against the applicable criteria and developed findings. And so I always encourage, read your staff report first. And then if you have questions on something, then you can go in and start to look at the applicant's material, the specific drawing or a map or a narrative that they had or something like that. If you start with the application first and think, okay, I've got to get my head all wrapped around this and then go read it, you can do that. It just takes you more time, because there's lots of things that are, you know, are clear and objective, you know, they've got to they've got to have this number of X. And we decide, we evaluate and determine, do they have that number of X? If they do, then the finding says, you know, they have, so they meet this particular criteria, they've got X, X whatever it may be. So it's just, but trying to get stuff six weeks in advance. Three weeks in advance, four weeks in advance.
I guess the only reason I'm asking is because this last one was really technical and I had to do a a huge amount of Googling to even understand what it was saying. And it's, it's important to to me to not only understand the staff review, which obviously is what we're expected to look at, but to also understand what the report itself is saying. So, yeah, I guess that's all I had to say.
Here's the worst case. Is that there's a provision in in state law that if we go past the hundred-and-twenty days, they can go to court and get a writ of mandamus. And a judge can say, the application is approved as submitted, and it may not meet a variety of our criteria. And Jason's been on the commission long enough to know, there's lots of stuff. And there's no perfect application, but you never want to be in a position, in my opinion only, that you have a judge making a determination that says, oh, whatever they submitted, it's just approved. That's, that's the worst-case scenario, because there may be lots of things that needed conditions that they need to modify.
I I don't mean to speak ill of the judicial profession, but I can almost guarantee that should it go before a judge in this particular situation, they're not going to put nearly as much time as Linda wants to put into reading the application before them so thoroughly.
I don't want to, but I feel obliged to. Actually, I do want to.
The final item that staff had is, um, and I kind of alluded to this as Commissioner Muzel is the chair of the Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission. So we do have a land use case that does not come in front of the planning commission. It deals with things.
What was the name of the committee again, sorry?
Newburgh Urban Area Management Commission.
And what does that mostly deal with?
It deals with ver- a very specific set of land use activities. It deals with comprehensive plan changes outside of our urban growth boundary within one mile distance of our urban.
Okay.
So it's a joint commission made up of city and county. So this commission is made up of one elected official from Newburgh, one planning commission member and this commission appointed Jeff to take that role.
So we know who to blame, I mean, uh, yeah.
It's made up of one citizen of Newburgh. It's made up of an elected official from the Amhill County Board of Commissioners, two planning commission members from the Amhill County Planning Commission, and then one resident that can be either inside or outside the urban growth boundary, and if they're outside, they have to be within the one-mile radius. So we have an application for what's called an urban reserve area expansion. It's out northwest corner of Fernwood Road and Corral Creek, and I can't get into the details because it's a continued hearing. But I wanted to make you aware of it, because you, all of a sudden, someday you might see something, go, why didn't that come in front of us? And so there's an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county where this particular commission, and there's a set of bylaws that commission has to operate under. If you're interested in just educating yourself, the application is on the city website under planning.
I remember crucially reading some of those bylaws in before them years ago, I believe when we had oh, it wasn't Shelley Park, it was the one west of that, because we were having to deal with, you know, county, uh, county and city, not really dispute, but the interplay between the rules and such.
So we just updated the intergovernmental agreement this fall. Year-year-long process, we got it updated, we updated the bylaws uh, as well, so we got everything, it was forty-plus years old, so that they all needed to be refreshed. So we worked with the city council and the board of commissioners and got those modifications done. So again, can't tell you anything of the details of it, uh, you can watch it on YouTube if if you've got nothing to do during the holiday season. You can watch two and a half hours of testimony. Yeah, to get it continued. So I just want, again, wanted to make you aware of that. So that's all I have, items from staff.
Ee Ween? Wing, like, like wings, okay? And what is, and what is, what is that?
It's a, some kind of agency that has a, um, you have a neighborhood network. You get on it and depending on like if you're in higher, it's a certain radius you can set. And sometimes, trust me, you find out stuff quicker on that website than you can from.
Is there a Patrick Ee Ween? I mean, sorry, that's really bad. Doug, Doug got it.
Okay, are there any other items from commissioners? Besides myself? Okay, and at this time, I would like to request something. I don't know if this is possible.
Can you speak up, it's really hard to hear you.
Hello?
Chris is my mic optional a lot, so.
All right. On, okay, let me see if I can. All right, on page two of the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-page document that we were supposed to do this evening, there is an unnamed tributary to Chehalum Creek. I would like to, a motion to approve naming that creek after Councilor Denise Bacon. To honor her and her service to the city of Newburgh and the citizens. Do you have a motion to approve that, to go to city council?
Well.
Can we do that?
There's actually a process.
I was gonna say, there must be.
To name creeks. Uh, I haven't done it in decades. Um, but I know that there's a process to be able to do it, so, y- yes, you could you could have a motion and a second to name it and with the request that it go in front of the city council and see if they concur. And if they do, then we'll have to do some research, like I said, it's been decades of what state agency we have to actually work with to get.
State of Oregon.
State of Oregon to get the name of a creek.
Yeah, Dr. Burns, uh, did it when he helped name the soil for the state, the jury soils. Yep, yeah, to go through the state. Well, thank you very much.
So you've, you've made the request, so if that is a motion, then.
So I make a motion to name the tributary in question after Commissioner or, yeah, Commissioner Denise. name the tributary in question after Commissioner or, yeah, Commissioner Denise Bacon, councillor, there you go. And I'm happy to second the motion.
Thank you, motion passes to.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry. I'm getting way ahead of myself.
Linda may be very, very anti Denise Bacon, we don't know, we don't know.
Why me? No, I'm I'm for it.
I I I just, yeah. Pick on the new guy.
And we have vote by roll call.
Sharon Capri?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Jeff Musall?
Yes.
Jason Dale?
Yes.
Linda Newton Curtis?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes five to zero to go before the city council for a motion to name the tributary identified on page two of two hundred and sixty nine of document S U B three twenty two dash zero zero one for the tributary to be named after councillor Denise Bacon. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. The twenty twenty two December eighth meeting is adjourned for the planning commission for the city of Newburgh. Thank you.